All right.
So first, I'd like to thank the audience for being here as well. This is going to be recorded, so we'll have an opportunity to look back in case you missed something. And again, Chief, we're going to explain what we're doing here this morning. And we'll have a chance to review and follow some steps later on. We'll give you those timelines again a couple of times a day before we begin. Thank you. So, there you go.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, as you all know, and have had lots of conversations with regards to our crime activity in our city, we thought that, and with the Violence Interruption Program that was discussed at the last presser mayor that you had and beyond, we thought this work session would be important to be able to inform the community around the crime activity, but also the victimology activity. Because we have to remember, you know, that there are victims with every crime. And we want to make sure that we start with an accurate base of data. So Chief Absol is going to be going through that. They're also then going to share some of the best practice research that was done on violence interruption programs. And then, you know, we can discuss forward from there. So I want to turn it over to Chief Absol to start his presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Dikstein, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. So this is going to be an update of data. This is raw data.
Don't hold it. Don't hold it. Just press it once.
Let's try it again. Good morning.
Morning.
All right, green is good. So the purpose of this thing is really, it is raw data of five years of the data, and also kind of breakdown of data from this year. We're not going to look at every single crime, but we're going to look at a violent crime that occurs in our city. And violent crime is described as homicides, robberies, aggro assaults, sexual assaults. Starting next year, or starting this year, we also have strangulation as considered a violent crime, which is going to reflect in 2024 numbers. And you probably will see a drastic increase because by itself strangulation in the past was not a violent crime. It depended on the severity of the injury, but based on what the legislation has done, that mayor strangles somebody, whether, what are the causation or what are the causes of injury, fully considered a violent crime. And I was really interested in as to who our victims are. There is a lot of conversation about who the offenders are and the disparate impact. When people talk about disparate impact, it's only viewed from the lens of who gets arrested, but never from the lens of who's victimized in our community. And I think that's an important story to tell because really, it's, we are here to serve our victims to make sure that they are provided justice and that there's no revictimization. And the Indian Police Department has done some things with a family justice center, a care house, where our victims don't come to police station, they go to separate place and provide services, childcare. So we are victims for domestic violence, sexual assaults. When our children are victimized, that they're handled a little differently. So we thought it would be interesting to see who our victims are. And this thing, this presentation talks about that. We're not looking at causations. We didn't go into why our numbers are what we are because that's maybe, there are better people from a research perspective that can look at as to why does crime occur? Where does it occur? We have ideas. Poverty is probably a main causation. But we're not going to talk, we're going to talk strictly about the numbers, so to speak. That's the premise of this thing, and there are a couple of slides on Cure Violence Program that has been very effective. And the research that's been done has been quite a bit that the commission and the mayor have talked about that. So again, part of violent crime are those four categories that we talked about. So this is a five-year worth of data. What you see is citywide on top, from 2018 to 2023. What you see on the right side, the age, the race, is actually who our victims are of crime. So if you can see that we have, in 2023, 60% of our victims for violent crime were African-Americans. The population of the city based on USHSS data is 41%. And five-year average is 59%. And then you look at the, can we stop that part? This went too quickly. Sorry about that. And then you look at the gender breakdown, what our five-year averages from a victim perspective. And then you look at the age, and you pay particular attention to who our victims are, really predominantly 25, 34 and under. In 2024, you will see a lot of victims from violent crime being 17 and under. So that's, that's the numbers for citywide, and we'll go into each of our three leasing districts. So central, obviously, the raw numbers, the data, it shows that they're, I mean, when you rethink about it compared to the other two areas, they're next to nothing, even though you see an increase of our five-year average. The changes that you see is not a year-to-year basis, it really is compared to the five-year average. That's a better holistic view of looking at our data instead of looking at the previous year, unless it's a great jump like we'd had in all the tests. Then you want to look at, okay, what changed? But really, the numbers you want to look at is on a, can we stop that? Make sure it doesn't go automatically. Sorry. So central, you see the breakdown of our victims are. You see the population breakdown. You see the age breakdown. And hopefully, that starts telling a story, which is just a factual story of who are our victims are. On the east side, again, five-year data shows that is a 9% decline. And you see the raw numbers, and you look at the racial breakdown of English. What you're seeing, even the numbers for African-Americans are much lower on the east side, but based on the population number, there's definitely a disparate impact on, of crime on our African-American community. Much, much more so on anybody else. A story that we need to recognize, that we need to figure out and see what, how can we address that. West, again, the good news is it's 11% down over a five-year average. The bad news is it's 6732 victims of crime that we know of. Again, you will see on the rightmost side, you'll see the breakdown of who our victims are, and then the population numbers of who they are. And then you look at the, again, the age. Again, no judgments on why it occurs, it's just factual information. This is what we have so far in 2024. Citywide, we have 747 events of violent crime. Now, that includes strangulation, so that number is going to be a little, quite a bit higher because that's a new category. The breakdown, again, you see citywide, African-Americans are victimized at 61%. Of the 747 number, population 41%. And then you see white, and you see others. You see the age breakdown, and nephew? Sorry. Apologize for. If you look at the age breakdown in 2024, now you see quite a few more numbers popping up at the younger ages, zero to 11, 12 to 17, 18 to 24. In all categories, if you, if you go all the way across to central, to east, you see the, you, you, the numbers speak for themselves, right? They tell a story that we need to tell, I need to tell, and I think we need to recognize, and then hopefully put things in place to address our victimology. Homicide numbers, again, over a five-year average, it's a 23% decline. But I will tell you for population of under 140,000 people, 31 people, losing 31 people to homicides, this unjustified homicide. That's not the actual numbers that we have. We usually have a much higher, about seven or eight cases on a yearly basis are ruled justified by homicide. And these are not police shooting anybody, these are citizens who are involved in self-defense. That we still have to investigate that. Obviously, you see the numbers for central. We'll just go to central. We have two incidences. The numbers are skewed because of what happened in 2019, because of Oregon District shooting. But again, you see the imbalance there. 31 total, 22 west side. You see the, we'll show you the imbalance when we get to the numbers for east side and west side. Overall, I think it's 75%, I believe, of our victims of homicide are African-Americans. This is east, again, seven homicides, 2023, 20% decline. You see the numbers of the racial breakdown, you see the age breakdown. 100% of victims on the east side, and quite last year were males. The west side, you see 22 homicides, about 25% decline over five years, but way too many. And you see on the west side, 95% of our victims are African-Americans. The population is 79%. So definitely, definitely a great imbalance. Over five-year average, you don't see anybody under age of 17. 2023, you don't see it, but over five-year average, you do see about 12% of our victims are under the age of 18. This is through June 30th, so we've had, I believe, what, homicides in July?
We're 23 for the year.
23 for the year, so this is through June 30th. And you see the population breakdown citywide, and you see it on the central side, and you see it on the, on the west side also. You see the age on for 2024, you see the numbers are quite alarming at zero to 11, 12 to 17, 18 to 24. Definitely, you see quite a bit of a jump. Agro assaults are felonious assaults, felony assaults, where there's serious bodily injury. And the picture is pretty similar to what I've shown you so far from victimology. Again, 548 incidences. Now, that number is definitely going to go up next year because we're including strangulation as part of that that has automatically included. Of 548, 29 assaults in central, 163 assaults in east, and 356 on the west side. You see the victimology on the right side, the five-year average, and what happened in 2021, 2023. Now, we males being affected against the age range. Central area, 12% increase, and that's probably a lot of public increase that has occurred. And some other issues that you're well aware of that I know we're dealing with, and a couple of hotspots. Also have much vibrant nightlife, so you have some issues coming out of Oregon District also. But the raw numbers are quite low compared to the east side, and definitely compared to the west side. A good news for west side is that over five-year average, we've seen a decline. That's still 356 victims that we know of. East side, this is, again, you see the, when you look at the averages, look at the population number and see the disparity at that there. The west side, again, 8% decline over five years, but still 356 that occurred last year. 87% of them are African-Americans, 13% white, one percent another, without male. Again, look at the age, the age range that we see. And this is what gets reported to us. That doesn't mean that that's all the assaults that have occurred. We're pretty sure the homicide numbers are very, very accurate, but I can't tell you that other numbers are going to be accurate because sometimes violent victims don't speak to us. And when we do find out, and not lots of them, we really don't know. And you see the numbers, 308 is what we have halfway through the year, so that number is probably going to be in the 600s. And again, the disparate impact of crime is really evident by those numbers. And you also see 2024 numbers. When you look at numbers, you see the age range has gone, where our victims have gone younger. This is, shooting into habitation is not a, that's a part one of violent crime, but it has a, probably a pretty, I would say, there was an effect on the family members who were part of that. So that's shooting that occurred in your home. This is not all shootings. This is not somebody shot, fired, called. This is actual evidence of somebody's house was shot, we got called, and we could, we know that there is evidence that we recovered. Last year, you see, over a five-year average, a 16% increase. 165 incidents that occurred last year. And the demographic data that we have for this one is based on who the reportee is. So, and that's what we've captured. And if you don't know who the reportee is, then we just put, yeah, that's why other categories are quite high, which we just don't know who the, what person was, somebody called saying this house was shot at. We didn't really, we didn't find anybody there. We still took a report, recovered evidence. But the other ones where you see who the reportees are. And then you see the breakdown. So east side is doing a little better. I want every, all sides to do better. I think one is too many because of the impact that has on individuals living there, living here. So you see a 42% decline on the east side, and 27% increase in the west side. The central, there's one incident, so I know that that number shows that 25% increase, but it's one incident. Again, one is too many, but you look at the age breakdown. Age breakdown in this thing is based on reportee, so you see the age a bit higher in this one. This is like a heat map of where the shootings are occurring. It tells a story. And this, that number is just 23 number, not a five-year average. And this is going individually by each of the police districts, central, east, and west. This number, these numbers are for the central, there's one case. And we know what the race of the individual, but you see the five-year average. Not a lot of raw data because it's one instance, which is, we want all sides to be this low. I like to do zero at 2021 rather than zero. This is east side, 13 incidences. Regional breakdown there. And that's just a partial reporting. We don't know the target what, we just know who reported the incident to us. This is west side, again, 151, of our 165 incidents occurred in the west state. That's the age, that's the racial makeup of the five-year average, the 23 numbers. Who's reporting it? So this is where you see the difference, where a lot of our female victims are, our reportees are females who reported that their house was shot at. That's the age breakdown, so you definitely see a difference there because these are individuals who reported that their house was shot at, and we recovered evidence that it was correct. This is what it shows in 57 number. Encouraging only in the sense that it's a whole lot less than 165, but it's still not really encouraging. 57 is still a pretty high number for a, 55 is still an area where, you know, you have, again, 50 out of the 57 that are hurting the west side. And I don't know what, you know, I, with the kind of trauma this world knows for us, I can't imagine the trauma that is inflicted on the people who are recipients of victims of this, of the crime. Where you're sitting in your home and your house gets shot. We know the trauma that does to us because our suicide rate is so high in law enforcement. And you just can't even imagine the trauma that is caused by a few of the victims just sitting in your house. This, this again, is not a, this is part of the offense, not a violent crime. Usually, there, violent crime, a motive illegal theft, a property crime, there is really no, violent crime, we know. Well, we know from violent crime, not in all cases, but most cases, victims and suspects have some kind of relationship. Doesn't mean that what happened to the victim is justified by any means, but there's some relationship, there's something known. What happened in Oregon District is not the norm, right? Even though those are very tragic incidents, usually there's some connection. Property crime, we really don't, usually it's no correction, connection, usually it's for profit. Whereas violent crime, there's some anger issues that individuals have each other. As for domestics, you know, people who are supposed to love each other, harm each other. But the trend for motive illegal theft, or motive illegal breakdown, is still such a disparate impact on the same community, right? And then predominantly, on the west side, 2,400 vehicles stolen. Now, in 2022, you know, the TikTok video that was pushed out about how to bypass some electronic gizmos, and you see a drastic increase since that time nationwide, and we will know different. I think 60% of our vehicles that were taken from last time that we did were Hondas and Kias. Cars that are a lot more affordable. And so from economic perspective, if you're on the lower end of the economic spectrum, well, those cars are good, and my attorney, I believe, I has a Hyundai, right? So it's not that there's anything wrong with that car, but they're definitely economically, you know, better cars. But you see the impact that we have on our, 2,400 cars is a lot of vehicles. And I know from, we're not going to talk about offenders, but we do see younger and younger offenders when we catch them. But that's the, that's the breakdown of the victims. Obviously, I don't know how a 11-year-old can be a victim of a vehicle theft. Look at that number, usually it's, they can own a car. So usually, you'll see numbers that are much higher. Again, the impact is pretty telling, you know what the impact is on our community itself. And then we just kind of go into what happened in the central. A lot of these cars are from garages that have been stolen. East side and west side, from all over the place. There is like no one place that cars are being stolen. I know we're recovering vehicles other places. So some of the, we have some data that shows how a car recovered near some of the group homes, not anybody. And we also then, the reason then our cars recovered elsewhere, I'm just wondering if some kids want to go back to home because they're so far from their homes when they're here. We have kids from County, everywhere, because I think well over, I don't know what the number is, over half of the group homes in Ohio are in County, and quite a few are here. So you see increases in vehicle theft. Details every week, try to target known offenders, known locations. We have a pretty rigid pursuit policy, so unless the state helicopter is with us, we have to take off, we don't chase the stolen vehicles, if the state helicopter is with us, then they follow, and then we pass the offenders. Give you the age breakdown, the victimology. It's kind of telling, and I know we haven't talked about it in the past. Good news is, I don't know if it's really good news, is that we are, so our 900 vehicles stolen, so that's a whole lot less. But that really isn't good news. That's 900. It's still going to be about 1,800 if the trend continues. So it will be less than last year, but it's nowhere near acceptable. And it's the same trend is going now. We see some of the offenders are getting pretty smart. Excuse me, electronic key fobs, and we even see some luxury items being stolen. So they've gotten smarter. So this is something that we have looked into, strategies to address violent crime. And this, the Cure Balance Program, sorry. It is, it is a, it is a model that I know we looked at last year because we saw a lot of research on it, a lot of successes. So I know that the mayor and commission has talked about that. And what it does is that it, it has, on the, on the right side of the, you will see the theory behind the model is interrupt transmissions, stop violent behavior before it occurs, identify and change the behavior of the individual responsible for the transmission of violence, and change treaty norms. And then you see the, you know, stop violent behavior before it occurs. Next step is, based on the second bullet point, is reducing the number of violent individuals, create a social pressure to stop the violence. And the way the model has been utilized, and it makes perfect sense. And we had kind of a model like that a few years ago, where we employed community members who are part of the community that could relate a lot better than somebody like me wearing a uniform than really walking the shoes of somebody else who's been receiving and, or growing in an environment where it's normalized. Where you, our list individuals who have reported, maybe at some, at one time were part of the problem, but kind of recognized they were led astray, and then they're, they can speak so much better to the very community members who are, who are being led astray today. And, and, and a lot of the things I see is really glamorizing the lifestyle. There's more glamour to it. You might get away for a couple of days. Eventually, we are relentless, and we're, we're not going to sit by if you harm someone. And we don't care who somebody looks like because we care about, and I, we do care about the victims, right? We don't want to see, again, again, success is absence of crime, not the fact that we arrest somebody for a crime. So that, that model has been very, very effective throughout the nation, and throughout the world, actually. The research has been done in Mexico and parts of, other parts of South America, it's been very effective. It's been effective in Cape Town, South Africa. So the modeling, obviously, you use different ways of doing things, but the modeling, the core model that you guys talked about, that we have looked into, is very, very effective. The next page, we'll talk about some of the research that's already been done, and when it was done, and the.
Just next, Chief.
Okay, thank you. So this is not all the cities, but you see New York City, Baltimore, Charlotte, St. Louis, Milwaukee. You see the year, the research was done, who was it funded by, and the major findings for this program. Now, this program, when, if you readapt this, and I definitely recommend adopting some sort of that Cure Balance Program. This is not a five-year project. This is a generational project. We can serve for 11 years, and it probably should have been done, we should still have it. Now, the short model has some consequences, Tom. It was, the Cure Violence Program, it really is, the communication with police is one way. We tell who are the individuals are, the organization is. This is where crime is occurring, and we don't expect or want anything back in return. We want to make sure that those individuals goes out, they go out in the community, temperature down, and then also have some training, provide services as to those individuals that want to come and get out of that lifestyle. Because I will tell you that those individuals, when, there's a, I'm going to identify, and I'm not suggesting that this is the only person doing that, but Victory Project kind of does some things. Same kids that mostly are a problem, given the right guidance, are no longer a problem. So the environment does play a role in it. So a lot of those individuals that are currently involved, I think, walk for, for peer pressure, there needs to be an outreach for those individuals, the way to get out of this. Whenever they might be getting involved in because of the peer pressure of being, living in an environment. But you see the numbers are telling, 40% reductions, right? I mean, everything that you see, you see way reductions, right? And the research is John Hopkins, Northwestern University, University of Illinois. These are, these are renowned universities that do research, and they're not just going to put their name on, on a, on a project if they didn't show the results, right? In a short result, my understanding is Toledo, which is doing the same thing, is only like a three years old, and they saw their first results three years into the program, where they saw a reduction in homicide. When we looked into that with them, they said they had 2023, right? They had 70 homicides the year before in 2022, and they were at 17 of one after the year. I don't know what the actual numbers were. I think it's run through their mayor's office. That's the closest one, but obviously, there's no, we didn't include them because the program hasn't been available, resourced. Available and not resourced, so, next slide, please.
Chief, can you pause it? You're going to have to pause it.
I want to, my mic doesn't work either, since I gave up my working mic. I want to just reemphasize something that the chief touched on ever so slightly. The best case, the best practice research in most cases show the city has a completely hands-off relationship with this program, right? Because, again, it's people with lived experience and credibility on the street. And if they think they're working, they're the chief, or you, or whatever. And if they think they're working with the chief, or you, or whatever, it's not as effective. And so while we might be a major funder of such an initiative, it's a really hands-off relationship that we have to establish in order to have our greatest results. So I just wanted to really emphasize that again. As we prepare to go down this path, I want to make sure everyone stays aligned around that thought.
Yeah, I think it's important, the only part that we will have is to give data to who the group is that's going to do this work. And that's what everybody has done. It's, we talked to Jacksonville, Florida, Toledo, it is, most time PDs, like, what are you talking about? What Cure Violence Program? Because they're, the working folks are not involved, it's the chief and crime analyst just gives them the information saying, this is what occurred this week. That is hands-on. And that's what's been most effective, and it makes perfect sense.
One of the things that I think is important is to look at some of the timelines, to talk about the next steps. And just so more and more individuals are aware of where we are, of where we're trying to go with this process. So between now, thank you. So between now and January, we're looking at trying to develop a draft request for proposals. And that's the RFP, of course, to identify potential community organizations that could serve as a site director for the violence interruption program. In August, we hope that community partners will receive an invitation to review the RFPs and to help guide the selection process to a community-based organization that, as Ms. Dixon said, will handle and run this organization on this process. In October to December, we're looking at having to be able to issue the RFP, to be able to collect the responses and complete the, complete, excuse me, collection process. In January, like I mentioned, we hope to be able to award the contract. Now, as was mentioned before, you know, we've talked to some cities throughout the nation. Chief has some of those up there, talked to leaders in Kansas City, we talked to some leaders in other places that are doing this work. And the results you've seen, all seem to have very positive results in terms of reducing the type of violence that we're looking at. Philadelphia, in two years, had about a 20% to 30% reduction in terms of crime. Looking at those type of situations also gives us hope that we can make these things happen. Now, we know we have a lot of individuals in this community that are doing different types of things, and we hope they engage and apply for this process. And we also hope to go a little bit further, because you hear us talk a lot of times. In addition to us doing this work, we also hope to engage with churches and schools and doing some of the other conflict resolution training with groups, sort of more and more by young people before they move to a level, so they, to keep them at least engaged with some tools to be able to learn how to identify and resolve conflict at its lowest level. So that's really one of the major keys in terms of dealing with this. But I guess I'll stop there. Commissioners, any thoughts, questions? Ms. Churchloss?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very, very much. I also want to commend the city, the entire team, Jackson, Mr. Beckman, Ms. Blackshear. As you already mentioned, the data that you provided to us this morning is very alarming. It's disheartening, to say the least. But I also believe that it is necessary that you are providing this information to us at this time, given everything that has transpired. And I just really would like to thank you for your comments. Thank you for, again, really knowing and addressing the issues that we're dealing with in our community. And I also want to thank Ms. Dixon as well for her comments and really setting the foundation as to, this is not something that the city or this body is going to drive. This is something that would be community-led, and this is something that we are going to have to collectively work together. We know that we're dealing with a number of issues. This is, the gun violence that we're experiencing right now are all symptoms, right? All symptoms to what you just alluded to, chief, poverty. We know that we're experiencing the effects of redlining. We know that we are experiencing the effects of trauma, which you mentioned. So I do have a number of questions this morning, but I would say I am very excited to know that we're moving in this direction. And I just want to thank my colleagues, again, with the administration, that we are now coming and having the conversation. A couple of things, this is very important, but there are a number of people that are here, and there are also a number of people that cannot be here, due to various reasons, obligation, work schedule, whatever have you. So my plea and my question is, is it at all possible, given that the Omega Baptist Church will be holding a community conversation on Thursday? And I understand we are extremely strapped in terms of our capacity, we don't have the bandwidth, especially people who are dealing with a number of things. And we had to get this information out, as well as people understanding the next step. So is it a possibility that we can take this information to that session so people really know that we are, in fact, having conversations and that there is, in fact, a plan, if you will, to resolving some of the issues that we're seeing? So that's my first question.
Yes, but absolutely, obviously, before we go to the community members, you know, we want to make sure that the elected leaders of this community were the first ones to kind of get this data. So I didn't want to go ahead and have this conversation throughout and not include you. I know my chief advisory council, I kind of, I ran this information by them because they are the community leaders, but that was the extent of it. So they provided some feedback to us based on what we were giving them to make sure that the information is presented in a way that is just very, very factual. So yeah, I mean, my expectation is that, yeah, this is exactly what we're going to do, because I think we do need to identify and recognize the disparate impact of crime that is occurring in our communities, especially for the west side. So yeah, I mean, we have no issues between myself and the five majors I have, and the technicals. Somebody will be there to be able to present this information to, is it this Thursday?
It's next Thursday.
Okay, we'll make sure that between, and Lieutenant Colonel Harrison will be back by that time, between the seven o'clock, that somebody is there to present this information.
Thank you, thank you, Major Mullins, Major Johns, thank you to your entire leadership team, as well as to you, chief. The other thing that I wanted to mention, I apologize, I'm very excited that we're doing something. Commissioner Shaw, we had a conversation about this, him and I, and we're very, this is important to all of us. We cannot talk about economic development, we cannot talk about workforce development, we cannot talk about being immigrant-friendly, and we are not addressing these issues. And I know I'm preaching to the choir. The other thing that I wanted to say to Ms. Dixon's point, like, no, this is not a city-led initiative, program, whatever have you, but the city has to do its part in regards to not just being the funding stream or whatever have you, but also addressing the other determinants of health factors that we're dealing with, i.e. the conditions of our neighborhood. You already alluded to, we're dealing with people being products of their environments. So if all I see is blight, trash, if I see burnout pals, whatever have you, then that's how I'm going to act out. If I don't see pride, if I don't see cleanliness, if I don't see developing my community, I feel as if no one cares. So why should I care? So I'm going to act out in trauma, I'm going to act out in violence, I'm going to do all these things. So, again, we're doing the work with the neighborhood recovery plan, but we got to do more. We got to make sure that we're investing in our neighborhoods. We got to make sure that we aggressively demolishing these properties so that we won't have pop-up parties, or we won't have squatters or unhoused individuals who are dealing with these situations and in the struggles of life to make sure they have the resources and the support that they need. So I'm glad that the city is partnering, partnership with NVHO, we have our continual care. We're continuing to do those things, but again, it's going to take a collective effort.
Yeah, and this is what we call Public Health Approach to Crime.
Exactly.
It's been cued as Cure Violence, but really, if you look at the, especially the fundamentals of the program, we're talking about services and how to provide avenues for individuals by not being where, well, we are at this location, so come to us, because now you're providing information to individuals that are part of the community, that understand the community, and giving them the skill set to say, because, kind of, you have to adopt, I think, the model that the policing have, which is, we don't wait for you to come to PD. We go wherever the stuff is happening and do that. So that's the approach, and I know there's somebody from Public Health here. So that really is the approach, the Cure Violence approach, really, it really is just not about violence interrupters. It's also about the other services that are part of that free-pronged model that we showed in one of the slides.
Yeah, let me add to, Commissioner, the raising points that, you know, we've been talking about for decades. And we've seen the city make progress as far as, and we'll be in that process for a long time. What I do want to say is that, I think even before we had the shooting at the Christmas parade, we were talking about these kinds of things. But I know specifically, after we had the shooting at the Christmas parade, we called together members of the community, we had conversations with the Black Panthers, we had conversations with the street soldiers, we had conversations with the NDOSP, Urban League, we had conversations with all those individuals who were already out in the community, Monty Bush Group. We had conversations with people who are doing work with people across the city. So this is not necessarily a surprise. This is something that we've been working on for some time to try to address all those concerns that you're raising, because all those concerns are very valid. But the aspect of, again, working with the county, working with the schools, we've had all individuals who have been a part of a table of conversation for quite a while. So that's how we got to this point of resolving this, because this is what's working across the nation.
No, I appreciate that, but now we're coming collectively together, so.
So that's why we have the process here that we're going to be.
Yeah, that's fair, but I'm glad we're now publicly having that conversation, having all entities, organizations, stakeholders involved. And so I really do appreciate that. Last question, because I want to definitely make sure that I'm respectful of everyone's time. So with all of this that you have provided to us this morning, what programs, initiatives? Because again, to your point, you have people who are experiencing trauma, trauma, PTSD, a number of things, mental health illness. I mean, I just recently had an incident within my neighborhood, on my block, you know, that was very traumatizing because of all of these different things, the environment, so many things that we have against us, if you will. So what programs, initiatives do we have in place to really start providing that level of support to those who are experiencing the trauma, the victims to all of the various incidents that we've seen in our community?
Like, I can tell you that our approach, not for necessarily every big single victim of crime, but particular groups. So actually, Major Brian Johns was the force behind the Family Justice Center, and also the Believe the Care House, where we know that there's a particular impact that if you are a victim of sexual assault, or if you are a victim of domestic violence that has on you, because there's a lot of, the victims get victimized repeatedly by the same individuals. So there's an approach there where we deal with people outside. And we're going to tell you that it's 100% successful, but at least there's an effort on our part to make sure that when we deal with victims of those crimes, we don't re-traumatize them by bringing in and dealing with them in how we deal with, you know, somebody whose car got broken into. We can take a separate place, if they have kids, we have a place for the kids to kind of hang out, so we can deal with the victim. We try to work with course to make sure that, that also the trauma of dealing with the criminal justice system, right? Because it could be, if you don't know the system, it could be pretty daunting. With the carehouse, with the kids, I mean, that's done all off-site. And then there's Children's Hospital is a great partner with that, there's social services there. So there are individual efforts being made there to be able to deal with victims of crime. But I'll tell you that I am a true believer, because I've seen when police go out of their lane. Our lane is our lane, right? And I don't care how much training I get, I'm never going to get the training that a social worker has. So the part of this thing is to really activate all the other aspects of services and kind of work in collaboration. Because if you're asking me how I'm going to have somebody recover from trauma, I don't know that we, the police department is the best thing for that, but there are other people, and we got to get them activated. We do have them activated for some violent crime, but not for every single thing. So I think part of this thing from overall macro perspective is, who else is available? And how do we get them involved so that when a person gets victimized, the retaliation is not in their mind, right? Because a lot of our shootings are occurring because somebody believed that they were disrespected, right? So this is probably a much more changed than maybe what happened in the 80s, which was really on the drug trade, or this is my area, but now it's a little bit different. Not that that has gone away, but it's not the same level. The same thing I tell my officers, instead of saying, well, somebody's not doing their job, so we're going to do it? That's how we got into the mental health crisis that we have, because the country has a whole stopped funding mental health in the 80s, and the police says, oh, we got it. And now when we say, well, we don't have expertise in that, and we're like, well, how dare you? Same thing with animal services, right? Our guys do things, and they're like, oh, it's like, why are we doing that? That's not our, that's not a role. That's not a role. And I know it's difficult at times because some decisions I made are not popular with some nonprofit groups. So like, when did that became my role? Why maybe it became my role? Because we are a bunch of doers. So I am very careful to make sure that I don't take more than I can handle. I'm, I know people don't like me saying that, but we're not a reactionary force, right? Even when we proact, that we are reacting to some things that occur. So yeah, there needs to be a much bigger collaboration from a victim perspective. We do that for our sexual assault victims, our domestic violence victims, our children, but, you know, not for everyone. So we make, we do our effort, but we do want to stay within our lane and kind of try to activate others and kind of rely on others to say, this is your role, right? This is, it sounds bad, and I mean to bad, that's not my role. It's not my role to raise somebody's kids. We do a lot of activities, Major Johns has been doing something with the kids the last few years. That's three hours in a week. I don't pretend that that's going to, they're going to overcome the trauma of being victimized about three hours a week with a bunch of police officers. So yeah, I think we all have to take part in it. So I don't know if that really answers your question, but I do want to stay with my lane.
Well, I think one of the things too, as well, and I talked to Commissioner Leffler last week, we have a lot of services that are in this community. And one of the things that we have to do a better job of is trying to find out just who they are and what they're doing, and find out ways that we can collaborate to have maybe other umbrella, if you will, clearinghouse of what those services are. And maybe we can, you know, find ways of making sure information is out about those different programs so they can serve some of the needs we have as well. Your time, you got one more question, or was that the last question?
I'll hold it, I want to be respectful, thank you.
Fair shot.
Now, I want to add my thanks and gratitude for this session, particularly the focus on victims. I can remember a few years back, I had the opportunity to talk to a whole class of juniors at a high school. And I asked them, how many of you have been impacted by the death of someone because of gun violence? And every hand in that auditorium went up. So to think about the impact in this community of gun violence, not just to those victims that are captured here, but to the loved ones of those victims throughout our community is very extensive. So I appreciate this conversation. You know, the work I do with Dayton Children's, I see firsthand, not every one of these cases, but some of these cases. So I have a very close understanding of the impact on those loved ones when they have to come into RED to re-reeve their job or to deal with the consequences of serious injury. So I appreciate that this is the focus that we've started here. From the data, one question I had was, do we have any idea why there's been such an escalation in the shooting habitations? Because I can't, I mean, where I live, we hear gunshots. We know that it happened, I was looking at the heat map, and there were some hotspots very close to where I live. And so I was curious, so do we have any idea why there's been an increase in that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the ideas we have are very, just opinions. I'm not sure that we have a true causation as to why they've increased. I don't know, Brian, if you have any.
Yeah, what we do see is, we see some of it is like juveniles who will have like retaliation-type things. So what we'll see is it'll go like in spurts, where like one group ships somebody else's house and retaliating back and forth. But a lot of that's what we see is some of the young people, not just juveniles, also 18, 20 years old, where they actually, like when I was younger, you'd actually like, you know, you would fight or whatever. They actually go and they shoot up their mother's house, and then there's retaliation, violence always involved. And Cure Violence also does address the retaliation violence by following up with victims of crime and things like that. Which is always important, because what you see a lot of times nowadays is somebody will actually get shot or whatever, and the police will show up there, and they will say, you know what, I'm not going to tell you who shot me, I'm going to take care of it myself. And the violence just keeps escalating until somebody actually dies or what have you, so.
Thank you. Do we know from the 13 cities that were listed, that they've looked at? Do we know from the 13 cities that were listed that they've looked at this program with the shooting in the habitations?
Yeah, I don't know if they looked at specifically that. I think that that is a result of just the violent crime. So I think the focus is on reducing shootings of any kind, whether it's in the habitation or shooting somebody else. So I don't, I don't believe that the focus of the program has been shooting to habitation. I think the focus of the program, even for us, should be the violent crime aspect of it that will have this cascading effect on the four categories of violent crimes that we talked about, which is felonious assault, which includes people getting shot and not fatally, called serious bodily injury, homicides. So I think all of that will.
And thank you, Chief. And Chief, I appreciate your words on your lane. And that, you know, this is, the police can only do so much. I mean, multiple times you've said there's only so much you can do in terms of reduction of violence. I appreciate your comments that we've had a long time look at this and we've done different parts of this. I'm just curious if in this moment, have we done that comprehensive review? I think this is more probably for our city manager's office. Have we done it? Because, you know, the data you have here is impressive from these 13 schools or 13 cities. I'm curious about their adoption process. Are we adopting this program the way they adopt the program? Whether the adoption process impacts the success of the program? And so I'd be curious to look at the practice on adoption, adopting this program. But then I'm also curious around this comprehensive, because we know there's other prongs that can use to reduce violence. Commissioner Turner's lost names, some of them. We know that youth programming can reduce violence. And we have similar numbers, similar to what we've seen with these cities. And I'm curious if these cities have had multiple prongs to reduce their violence or just exclusively this program?
Yeah, I can tell you, I don't know the full answer to that question. So I can tell you that the two places that I know I'm familiar with, so both law enforcement, we're doing a particular strategy. And part of that is intelligence-based policing, which is who are the actual shooters and how do we target them? And why this other work has been going on at some time? Because when you talk to Jackson of Florida, when you talk to their sheriff, they're like, what are you talking about? The reason we're stopped is because of us. We actually have a Cure Violence program in there, right? And when you talk to Toledo, when we talk to Toledo, they're like, oh, and this is what we're doing. And what they're doing exactly is some of the stuff that we have done, which is, hey, who are our known shooters? And how do we go ahead and go after them? One of the details we did about a week ago, we can identify some people that were involved in car accidents and we targeted them, recovered six stolen cars from them because we kind of knew we had some intelligences, so they were involved, right? And Toledo gave us the same answer, but they also have a Cure Violence program. So it's kind of coincidental. So it does work and, you know, it's not like we as police are going to be like, okay, that's the program. We're going to, we're going to be hands off. We still have to do that. And part of that is who is committing the harm? And, you know, you talk about technology, you talked about how do you fish for the spear and not with the net, right? How do you not stop everybody, but stop the individuals that are responsible for? So that is something part of where we have to continue making that effort. And at the same time, this modeling has shown other places that there's work that gets done behind the scene, so to speak, that kind of reduces that retaliation aspect of it. And providing an avenue for individuals that truly do want to, they just, they just. And I agree with you. I think one of the things that, in the class that I was in not too long ago, I shared that article with Monty Bush about, I kind of evaluated his program, the approaches that he has, which is providing a safe environment for the kids. So there's no, you don't have to be tough guy, just go up there and be normal, right? And then they talk about youth programming, you know, they do that by faith, right? But they do have a Christian faith, which is commonality and all other faiths are pretty much same. And they also provide an avenue for them to get some life skills. Because they do some, they have a business that they run, landscape business, so provide avenues. So you can, you got to have all those things in place. So that, and I know he also stays in his lane, because I know he's been asked to expand his. He goes, no, my focus is, you know, young males this age, right? And then he wonders where numbers are very impressive. I think less than 1%, maybe a failure rate of kids that might get involved. Might even get involved in law enforcement, not that they do anything, they might even get involved. So that is definitely the approach. I mean, this locally, we see that. If you can do that in grander scale, right, that'd be awesome.
No, thank you, because that's a good example of something beyond the cure and the police programs and the other prongs would be like youth programming that Monty's doing. Reduction of violence, I'm excited on September 5th, I saw that the mayor, the former mayor of Stockton's coming in, where they did a guaranteed basic income and they saw significant violence reduction from that. Mayor Michael Tubbs is going to be part of the library's speaker series on September 5th. So reduction of poverty is another program that can be done. And then neighborhood development, so all these prongs. So Mayor, I appreciate you saying that we've worked on these. Question is comprehensively, have we looked at this time as we adopt this one, with our adoption process? And as you know, money doesn't grow on trees, right, Commissioner Shaw?
That's right.
And so the question is, of these programs that reduce violence, this one's effective. Is this the most effective of the dollars that we're going to spend? And so I'd like, it'd be helpful if we could have a comprehensive looking at, if we put dollars into youth programs, same amount of dollars in the youth program or poverty reduction or neighborhood development, would we see a better reduction? So that's why I went to comprehensive review, so that we're using our.
You have some ideas, because Ms. Trump actually has been in contact with Cure Violence since last year and as to how they do things and that she has some, we have some ideas that will be all fine talks. So in the conversation that you had about how you're doing the, we'll provide our input as to what the, even, because you also have to look at what the makeup of the policy group is, right? It's not, I mean, that group, even though that's not running the city, there's some policy oversight because you're talking about cashiers money. And so in some places you have a city, a police chief, some other people who are saying, are you doing exactly what you're, what are the goals and are you actually abiding by it? Because we're talking about public money, not talking about private money. So a lot of those things are that I know Ms. Trump has researched and will continue to research. And we obviously, with Darius, we will be a partner in it to provide the, what we know. And then the decision will be at a macro level of what works best for our community. And learn from what worked and served, outside the consequence base, which is why if you don't do that, we're going to go to jail, right? This is not part of this program. There are some good things that, I know Dr. Vanessa Ward was involved in that, so she has some insight. So those are great individuals that we can kind of pick your brain as to when it was working. How did it work and what are the lessons learned when it wasn't as effective?
I think it's fair to say that we've learned a lot over the many years we've been doing collective impact modeling. You know, we've partnered with the county on a lot of collective impact models. And I don't know, and certainly as we continue to do our research, if there's any definitive research to speak to the comprehensive review. Because it's typically not an either or, it's a collective effort. So there's never, I have never found the silver bullet in my 30 years almost of public service. It's a alignment of resources and programs alike. So it's not, I have not seen any research that says this one's more effective than this one or this, you know. And so what you're doing is essentially trying to attack all of the various issues by collectively and collaboratively aligning and making this a priority. And so there's got to be a violence intervention piece. There's got to be workforce development to inspire hope and opportunity. There's got to be the neighborhood conditions that we're all doing. But it's building the comprehensive model so that that's lined up. So that's where I would be going versus a review of sorts. Because we know from learning across the country of the things that are helpful and impacting the issues in Dayton. But we also know we have to Daytonize things. We can't just take things from other cities. Our neighborhood is, our community is unique and has unique demographics and whatnot, and we have to tailor it. So that's what I believe the mayor's effort in putting this broad task force together is because they're touching all of these variety of things. And then it will be up to that task force to help really make sure that everybody is aligning resources, funding, programming across that spectrum. Versus, so that's where, but we will continue to learn, look at research. But I don't know that there's going to be the kind of research as you.
Well, I think, I think I misspoke or I didn't hear correctly. What I'm asking for is what you just described. You know, we have a sense that we have a collective impact. And so let's see what are those buckets? Workforce development, neighborhood development, youth programming, poverty reduction, policing.
I think that's the work of the task force.
I think one of the things too that we talked about, I know the city manager and I've been working with Dayton Public Schools, for example, to do a partnership, M R U with mediation center, for example, so that we do a better job of helping to get to the young people who are going to get to a certain age. It's something that we used to do before, before every child went through the sixth grade. We had a program where they had conflict mediation training. That is no longer done, has not been done, probably about 30 years. But when they have those situations, it doesn't guarantee everything is perfect. But what they found is that when young people have a set of tools to identify and resolve conflict at its lowest level, there were more time on task. There are fewer kids suspended. There are few kids sitting in the office waiting to be disciplined, for example. So all those type of things had a collective impact. Because I mean, it should really get to your point, have a collective impact on contributing to this situation. Because as people talk a lot of times, it's easier to prevent some problems with young kids than it is to fix a broken adult. And so as we get to a point, you see so many adults in this community who just don't have conflict resolution skills. And they were to find a knife or a gun or something else to address their concern or their conflict. And when you have young people who are watching this, you have music that is promoting this type of behavior. All these kinds of things that we don't have control over. But what we're trying to do with this collective impact, because again, you make a very good point, but the aspect of how we put all those things together is exactly what I hear Commissioner Tarsh Lawson say, what I've said, what Chief has said, and probably Commissioner Shaw when he gets to hear some talk, is almost the same thing. But we'll see.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and you're right. I will be saying the same thing because it's the right model. The one common theme that I've heard this morning is collaboration. And that's what's so very important. I'm just thankful for all the folks that have joined, and some are leaving now, but it's been going a little long. But Omega Search and Victory Project and Street Soldiers and Fudge Foundation is here. All of these entities, Boys and Girls Club, and just so many other entities that are doing this work to help. This is really about creating a model that's going to kind of coordinate all those activities, if I'm hearing correctly. Yes, City Manager is saying yes. And yeah, so I want to get to the point also, you know, money does not grow on trees. We have to make some hard choices. So what I've done through our budget process is to implement violence interruption as a budget item. And I'm seeing ads from my colleagues, I'm sure that we're all interested in doing the same thing. So we'll have to make some hard choices. Do you have an idea of how much something like this would cost? I think I heard sometime 400,000?
Four to 500.
Four to 500, yeah.
A year.
A year, a year. So we're going to need our partners. I'm glad to see that Commissioner Lieberman was here just a minute ago and she's been engaged with us in this process for several years now. But it's going to take the entire community. So the folks that are in the audience, family members, neighborhoods, everyone has to pull in the same direction as we try to stem this huge problem in our community that, you're right, Commissioner, we won't be able to talk about or do, move forward on workforce investment or economic development or anything else if we're known as a violent community. But there's also an opportunity here to engage our residents, our young people in particular, on the different opportunities that are here. I am so troubled. I found out recently that one of our graduates of the apprenticeship program was one of the victims, had just graduated and was on a path to success for himself and his family. I'm glad that his brothers are moving into the program now. So maybe there's an opportunity to save some folks. But it's those kinds of opportunities that we have to put forward. Because there's so many better things to do than act out in violence. And it will get us, take us nowhere. But I'm glad that we're having this conversation. I wasn't sure in the beginning how this was going to come across. But I'm glad that we're doing this today. Because it's important to have this public conversation with all of our residents because it's going to take all of us. So thank you to my colleagues, thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Chief. As we go down this path, there are a lot of models out there. And I know that folks around here have been doing some of that work too. I think it's appropriate that this commission is hands off, the city is hands off, and that we're going to fund this thing in a meaningful way. But what I don't want to have happen is that folks start coming to us and putting their proposals through because we won't be able to engage in that way anyway. Because we're, at some point, we're going to have to vote on it. So I'm glad that this process is moving forward. It seems like it's headed in the right direction. I get a sense of urgency. How are we going to actually implement? We've been doing a lot of talking. Talking is important to understand the global environment and what the possible opportunities would be. So we've been doing that work, but yeah, it is time to move forward. And it feels like we've got some energy now and maybe we make lemonade out of some lemons that's been in the last several weeks. But now's the time and I think we're committed to doing this work. So thank you all for being here and contributing.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you all's forbearance, had to step out for another meeting. But I want to reiterate two things that my colleagues have said. First is that this is a priority to us. And when it's a priority, that means there has to be money behind it. And all of us have given our input and I'm looking forward to moving ahead in discussions. The second is, I want to footstomp something Commissioner said, which is the importance of our partners. If we do this ourselves, nothing will happen, nothing, nothing, or almost nothing. The effects, the effects of this, to be, really take advantage of it, we need to engage all of you all. And I really appreciate those of you who are here. As Commissioner said earlier, there are other folks who couldn't be here. And we want to thank them to, hopefully they're watching this. But I think those two things that we're willing to put resources toward it and the fact that we really need to engage partners, that's what I could stop that. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. You know, I'm probably going to close just by saying something very brief. The, the, some people find that surprising. But I know that as a teacher, as a coach, for the 10, 11 years that I was a teacher in the classroom, seven years being in high school, I taught conflict resolution skills to all my classes before we did anything. The first week in half, we didn't touch a book. He isn't run, they didn't do anything until we talked about each other. Names, Zodiac signs, favorite colors, how many brothers and sisters you have. So we created a family. We talked about the issue of safety. You know, in my classroom, no hitting, pushing, kicking or name call unless you did to the wall or you did to me, the wall can take care of itself and I can take care of myself. So we created this whole safety atmosphere until the attitude. And then we had to talk about the definitions of intelligence, definition of respect, definition of discipline. So we all were functioning on the same page in those classrooms as well as in the lunchroom, as supervisor said as well. But we found that so many young people, especially during the D C A time that we were functioning in, in Dayton Public School, so many young people found relationships that they didn't come to school with. And it comes to have those comfortable relationships, that they can talk to each other and they had minor conflicts, we just, we would laugh in a joke as you turn to find ways of solving those problems. I know it works. And as I talked before, when we see the absence of young people waiting in the faculty office for discipline and seeing young people, seventh, eighth graders go and tell a teacher, if you just teach us, we'll take care of the discipline. You know, when you have those kind of attitudes coming from young people, again, it brings back tears of joy when you start thinking about how far our city, how far our young people, who are our future, can go when we create programs like this that's going to benefit all of them. So I'm going to stop right there, City Manager, if you have anything else? Okay? I really appreciate this, really appreciate this. Thank you.